Well, then, we'll get some... this is a call to meeting to order. This is a study session, a public study session. For the purpose of discussing the appointments that are going to be forthcoming, hopefully in the very, near future, so that ourselves, the commissioners, can have an open discussion about some of the issues surrounding that, some of the parameters, especially for those of us who are new. And then we're going to talk about the appointments to the Water Advisory Committee. I'm not making, of course, any appointments today, but I was talking about getting parameters. And since that's a new committee, we want to talk about how we're going to structure that and make those appointments. And then also the appointments to the Oil and Gas Advisory Board, same thing, same criteria. And then we're going to discuss the Overcounting Enterprise Authority Contract, the agreement, or I guess it's not a contract, it's an MOU. It's a Memorandum of Understanding. Basically, we're going to discuss the relationship with the Enterprise Authority. So, having settled that, let's start with the first one, discussing the appointments for 2012. Just to bring over a bit of the kind of speed, we've done some of those. There's a multitude of appointments and/or reappointments. One of the things with me coming in, I'll just say as simply as I can, I've had some questions about what the criteria is, has been, or should be, in making appointments to, like, the Planning Commission, for instance. And not understanding some of the past history, not understanding some of the past practices, if you will, there was a little confusion on my part, at least, about whether or not, you know, you re-up everybody every year, you reappoint them. So, we've done some work studying that issue, and there are state regulations concerning that. And without being the attorney that I'm not, basically, the understanding that I now have is that we appoint on a three-year term. Each person is appointed on a three-year term. Turns out, if you go back and make some corrections to the dates that people have been appointing the Planning Commission, it's, there's one from each district, there's three districts. So, there's three people in each district that we appoint. It's not by consensus, this is by each commissioner gives the point, but it's three. And there's one that expires every year on a rotating three-year basis. So, everything mechanically seems to be in place. The question there was, do you reappoint, or can you replace somebody in a year that is not normally the year that they would fall to expire or to return one in? And why you probably can technically do that, according to the state regulations, it says that there has to be a very specific rule, or reason, or a purpose, or, you know, something that's happened that would justify that. So, having understood the criteria, one of the things that I've asked, because I have somebody I want to run the planning commission, and the person that I have expiring, I haven't planned on replacing. So, I've asked either my fellow commissioners, there's also provision in the state regulations that allow for us to appoint an alternate to the planning commission. An alternate being somebody who attends the meetings, can participate in the meetings, but does not have a vote unless somebody else is absent. If one of the nine is absent, this person can then be seated at that meeting and becomes the voting member, the backup, you know, second string quarterback, so to speak. And I think it's a great idea, not only because of that, it gives you a full board every time, but you've always got somebody who's in training, if you will, it's almost like an apprenticeship program. So, one of the things I've asked, is a kind of a fallback position, is to ask the commissioners if I could appoint somebody as an alternate to the planning commission. So, that's kind of what our discussion is today is going to be, to make sure that if we do have any questions, concerns, disagreements, or ideas about the structure and how we should move forward in making our appointments for the state forward, that we talk about today. So, does that make sense?
Yeah. The only suggestion I've got for that, actually a couple of things, is I think it's a good idea and concept, because what it'll do is it'll give us a tiebreaker. The planning commission has nine members. Somebody is absent from a meeting for any reason. We have eight votes, so it's very possible to have a tie vote on any issue that comes into form. So, I think that would provide a good balance. Yes, sir.
My understanding is, and I don't know if it's a question or not, is that with the planning commission, a tie vote is a no vote.
Right.
In other words, in a particular move to approve something, a tie vote is like a no vote, and then we go down.
And this would preclude that, so that we wouldn't have to work on a tie vote unless multiple members are on board.
Unless you do, on four.
Yeah. And so, you know, in theory, I like the idea. The only reservation that I have is, I'm fine with it being appointed, but what I'd like to see is it be a rotating appointment. And so, you know, if District One Commissioner appoints it this year, in '14, it'll be District Two, in '15, it'll be District Three. And that way, maybe the same person is reappointed, depending on that decision.
That...
But that way, it's not locked in, so that someone can come back and say, wait a minute, Robert, and I'll use you as an example, Robert is stacking the deck with an extra point.
Is the alternate a one-year commitment?
Well, that was my next question. I think that's kind of what you're saying, and I think that's probably good.
And that's what I'm asking for. Since regular commissioners, planning commission members are three-year terms, this, what do we call it?
Alter.
An alternate.
What's called a reg.
Would be a one-year term.
Be a one-year term.
Be reappointed each year.
And the following year, they could be replaced by the next commissioner in line.
Or reappointed.
Or they could take the place of the person who is expiring in any three of the districts. Because one of the other fallacies, I think, is, or misinformation, or misinterpretation, is that the regulations don't say that a person who's appointed to the planning commissioner has to be in that district.
Right.
It was probably believed that it should be supposed to be, because of the appointments. But the regulations say that the only criteria is that you are a resident of the county. And therefore, I could appoint somebody from Agate to be on District One. Now, might not be, you know, it might not be the right thing for me to do, since I'm forced to represent District One, but I, like, in the case, if you couldn't find somebody that wanted to be on the planning commission from your district, you could go outside of boundaries and interplay somebody from somewhere else if you wanted to. So, you know, I think it's, I think it's a good structure, and I think the one-year term, and you've got that person up and running, because, you know, like, somebody on the planning commission told me, said, you know, it took me a year before you kind of knew what was going on.
Exactly.
Now, we've got somebody in training the whole time, you know, like having, like I say, a second string quarterback, right, and give him time. So, I would certainly, and we're not going to, of course, I'm going to make decisions today, we're going to do that Wednesday.
'13, yeah.
But, okay. Well, that, I don't have any more questions.
The only other point of clarification that I wanted to make was, it was brought up by a person that was resident that was in attendance last time, as to term limits on a planning commission. What state statute says is that the term will be three years, but there are no term limits for appointed positions. We have term limits in Colorado for elected offices, but not appointed offices. And so, we've run that past the attorney, and, you know, so that means that if somebody comes up to expire in '13, and let's say it's one of my appointees, and I'm happy with their performance, I can ask them to serve another three years if I choose to do so. There is no requirement that says that that has to fit.
Yep. And the other thing, Marshall mentioned this time, because he came, it happened this time. We had somebody in my district that took the place of somebody back in February of 2012. And when we first looked at the records, that person had a three-year expiration on their, on their term. Well, further study, just checking, we changed that back to expire in January this year, which was the original term of the person they replaced. Now, they can be reappointed, but they don't get a, you know, restart the clock, because that would throw out the whole cycle and the intent of what we're trying to do, or what's intended to be done with the one for each district each, each time. So, that person, if you take, just like anybody else, if somebody comes in and takes a commissioner's position, you know, you serve out the rest of your term, you don't start your term. So, okay. Good.
Cool.
All right. Moving along, the appointments to the Water Advisory. The Water Advisory Committee, which at the last Board of County Commissioners, we voted and agreed to form, or start, develop, whatever it was. Each of us, I think, has our own idea, a little bit about what the ultimate goal, and sure, I have, my vision of this is a short-term and then long-term goal. First and foremost, we have some things that we really, really need to accomplish. And they're broken into two components. Number one, we're working on the oil and gas regulation, we're working on the MOU and the best management practices. And I see that as a package, kind of, you know, that's a package. And we're far, we're pretty far along in that. There's been editing committees, there's been citizens groups, and there's been a lot of input, and a lot of meetings, and then there's another meeting, I believe, on December 8th. And so, that's moving along nicely, doesn't mean that we don't, can't add some firepower to it if we need to. And then the other component, that is, I think, equally as important, or more important, is that we have guidelines in place for the consideration, and when we get a special committee, whether it's a metropolitan water district, whatever, we need, and we receive that. We need to have a consistent, standardized, fair criteria, so that it's really not just the same, but that we make sure that we do the best possible job considering and checking out all the things that we do. So, we'll call that, what do we call, I don't know what we'll call them, Special Service Districts.
Special Service Districts.
Regulations, okay. And we're not nearly as far along in that, because we've got a later start. Well, we have people in this county who have the expertise, the brain power, and the wealth to serve this county in the volunteer roles, that can help us get to that, get that done quickly. And my self-imposed deadline for all four of these components is in April, is the end of the Water Committee. And I think, you know, we need to have these things done, we've been struggling with them, they're complicated issues, we want to make sure we get it right. So, my vision is in the first phase of the Water Advisory Committee, we'll call it WAC, but of the WAC is to get some very talented, high-powered people who can help us get to the finish line on this April, whatever the April to offer, I don't know what the date is. But, so that we're all, we finish at the same time, and we're ready to go, all the components in place, to get, to do this thing right. And that would be the first objective. Some of them might not even want to continue to serve beyond the phase one. But, phase two would be to have a wider advisory committee, that at that point could be expanded and would serve in multiple roles, either as a direct line responsibility to the Board of County Commissioners, or the dotted line responsibility to the planning commission. But basically, serving as a citizens resource, an advisory group, consultants, whatever you want to call them, to help make the best decisions possible. And ultimately, their responsibility would be directly to us to get this first thing done. And beyond that, I don't know whether responsibility lines will change, but, you know, they could be, they could go through the planning commission and bring, so that when the planning commission comes to the Board of County Commissioners, what they recommendation, it's really embedded through public hearings, through public participation, citizens advisory group, or whatever you will. And I think by all working together, we're going to have the best possible outcome on all these different things. So, the question today is, how do we form that? And, you know, do we, do we, do we each appoint one person for this phase one, or do we each appoint one, and have two at large, or, I mean, I guess it's just an open discussion of how we think, you know, I've equated this to a, using a military analogy, this is like the special elite force, the Navy SEALs, you know? You need to send them in quick, you've got a specific mission, ready to find a time frame, get it done, and then move on. So, yeah.
Wow, two things. Do you envision this Water Advisory Board only to operate in terms of referral for metro districts, or in general, across the board for development, residential, commercial, whatever? The reason I ask that is because the last, not the last one, but the one before that board, we utilized them as a referral agency. And so, they were brought on board in terms of evaluating every land use application that came before the planning commission and the VOCC. And I don't know if that's how you envision using them, or if you're just specifically looking at that problem.
I'm not in favor of them being a referral agency, because they're not, that group is not an agency. The idea of it, the way it was floated a couple of weeks ago when it was passed, was it would be an advisory group that provides information to the decision makers. I still think it ought to be routed through the planning commission, so that there is a reporting hierarchy without a direct door, if you will, to the Board of County Commissioners. Because ultimately, that's who's going to need to make those decisions, is the planning commission, and then they'll make their recommendation based on all of their sources of information coming from them. I agree, you know, the moratorium is set to expire now in April sometime, yeah, that probably ought to be their first order of business. What I see this group primarily being tasked with is to research and develop some alternatives to develop a water delivery and sanitary sewer service here in the county. We've talked about development for years, and we are, and I've talked to professionals, I've talked to developers, we are not going to get any development in this county of worthwhile substance unless we provide some kind, and I don't mean we, as the county, but unless there is a water delivery system and a sanitary sewer system in the county. We can't expect any large development to work off of a septic system with a leach field and drilling a well. We've got over 18,000 straws dipping into the aquifers underneath us, and we can't continue to live that way. The second thing that I would like to see the group do is to research and propose some long-range plans to develop renewable water in the county. Again, we've got over 18,000 straws dipping into the same glass of water. We have to start planning for the future. And, you know, I'm talking reservoirs, some way to store potable water that we have that people can rely on. And those aren't short-term fixes, those take 15, 20, 25 years to get into place. And so, that's what I see that group doing, is, you know, doing the overarching research and making recommendations for that kind of plan. And really, we need to update our master plan for the county. You know, it's been several years since that's been opened.
That master plan is in conflict with itself.
I know.
Is what?
It's in conflict with itself.
Oh.
And so, Kurt's opinion is, we need to start looking long range down the road.
So, you're looking at it as a long-range planning group, not in planning, we refer to it as short, short-term or long-range, and that short-term is specific to a case, and long-range is the big picture. And that's where I'm trying to get a grip, for how you see this group function.
And again, the way I see it, is they would report to the planning commission. So, if there is a project that comes up, and, you know, planning comes up and says, hey, we need some expertise, we need some knowledge, we need somebody to do some background work, okay, that's what that group would be tasked with doing, providing that input to the planning commission then, and to the planning department, so that you can make adequate recommendations to the Board of County Commissioners, so that this group, whoever that may be, can make sound decisions.
Well, the previously functioning Water Board did, in fact, we utilized them as a referral group, whether you call them an agency or advisory group. We submitted information to them to get their opinions and ideas, whether it be short-term or long-term, in terms of addressing the water issues. And there's a lot more area that could go into information that would be helpful in addressing some of the things that come up, because, well, we've got, we get a new subdivision proposed, and we get a new water district proposed, and we've got water districts all over that have, are just running around, you know, there, there's nobody really taking a look year to year at their performance, or lack of performance, or how they're serving the district, or whatever.
Well, and you raised an interesting point, because I think, first of all, let me back up with it. I do believe that a Water Advisory Committee, in its design, is for water supply projects or water issues. So, I don't think that they would, we would want to bring them in in the mix to find out how the roads are going to be laid on a new subdivision, or, you know, what the land, you know. I think that this is a Water Advisory Committee for one, so it would have to be appropriately water-related issues.
Oh, absolutely.
So, having said that, and I might have sent the wrong message earlier, but, again, talking about the short-term, long-term, I call it phase one, phase two, probably being the same thing, to me, it's a little different, because I think we have an immediate need right now to get some expertise and help in here. And I call it, for lack of a better term, I wrote a board here, the scientists. We need people that are, we're not talking politics, we're talking, we need people who are, who are talented, and smart, and experienced, and qualified enough in the issues, of being able to bring us all the issues and checklist points that we need to have on this permit guidelines, for us to move forward as commissioners and make the best decisions. Okay? So, that's our immediate need, and that's within the next, what, 65 days, or whatever it takes to get out. Self-imposed deadline, at the end of the moratorium, we want that done. Let's get this stuff done, for once. We've been talking about it all the time, I want it to see done. So, that would be their first session. And we might have three or five, however many are on this first one, some of whom may want to be on just for this first phase, and some who may read this day longer. Then I think we have the ability to expand that group to do other things. Now, the responsibility about reporting directly to the Board of County Commissioners is reporting through the planning commission. I agree with Commissioner Shagle that the straight-line responsibility in phase two should be to the planning commission, through the planning commission, through the Board of County Commissioners. For this first 65 days, we may want to consider making that a direct line responsibility to us, just to get this one specific mission accomplished, working with you. Okay? And so, they're like a elite task force at the moment. And then we're, then we could bring on other members, we could open, it would be, it'd probably be a group that would come and go, and bring in expertise. But it would address issues of metropolitan water districts. I see it as going, not just in the issues that you talked about, long-term, but as we move into the oil and gas exploration era of the county. Clearly, it's about oil, it's about gas, and it's about water. And we cannot ignore any of the science and the expertise. We're going to need all the help we can get to make the best decisions possible, going into this challenging, great time. So, in terms of determining, you know, what works, what is the water, what is the, I don't know if the water, amount of water can be determined, or the hydrostatic pressure that gets talked about, all those issues are far beyond my expertise. I, there's no way I can make decisions without a lot of really good, sound, smart help. So, I see them being available for all these things. Whether it's six months down the road, you know, working with us to develop, and we're talking about how, where the water's going to come from for fracking, and for oil development, and how we're, whether we can recycle, and, you know, just put the facts on the table. Two years down the road, oil and gas is gone, we've got a trillion dollars in the coffers, you know, things are going great, just built a new fun park out here, you know, I mean, all the, you know, all the things that potentially could come, and we talk about the long-term water, you know, we talk about places like Sun Country Ranch, where they're already having water issues. You know, 10 years from now, are we going to have 480 homes that don't have the water source out there? We could! You know, those are, those are, those are going to take some pretty heavy piece of brain power to help us figure it out. And we got to figure it out today, for 10 years soon. So, I see that, I see it as being an ongoing process, addressing whatever the issue of the day is, but in the next 65 days, help us get this.
The only thing I caution on is, using that group to provide recommendations for anything relating to gas and oil development, is, it's important for everybody to remember, the county has no regulatory powers over water. Therefore, if somebody who has their water rights wants to sell their excess water that they've adjudicated and they have a right to do, the county can't come in and say, well, wait a minute, that's going to make somebody's well blow dry, so you can't do that. We don't have the authority to do that. They can provide recommendations to us, that we could then go to the state and say, you know, we may have some concerns, or this landowner has concerns, but the county has no regulatory authority over waters.
One of the concerns, I guess, is, okay, developing a pay, which encompasses a certain number of acres, a certain number of residences, a certain use of water. And in our current process, we ask developers to tell us if there's sufficient water, and they have a 300-year pick for the pay that we want to have water for. One of the problems is, when the developer adjudicates the water, they have an official ID on which water is under there. They allocate a certain amount of water to a subdivision where you can put a straw into the upper gossom. And what is there, in terms of county policy, that is okay to do, that says, when that upper gossom runs out, you can still tap down to what is going to keep those water rights and that water quantity available to the residents and to the commercial property of that developer? And we don't have anything currently that gives us a handle on that.
It's because that's the state's responsibility.
Right.
And the way the state does that, when you adjudicate the water, is, the state makes the assumption that you're going to use up the water that's allotted to you in 100 years. Doesn't go for 100 years and a month. It says that in 100 years, that water will be gone.
But Albert County has a 300-year requirement.
That's right. That's right. And that's never been challenged in court. The state is in charge of water, the state issues those water rights based on their assumption of water availability, that it will be used up within 100 years.
To answer your question, we, we have some authority as it pertains to the land use, okay? And so, when we're looking at potential developments, we should take some leadership responsibility in pointing out the limitations of that, because a developer can come in with a plan, and there's an example of it in my neighborhood, where this lot, this five-acre lot is allowed to go to this water source, the next one goes to a different, and so forth. And it's already established that that landowner only has rights in that aquifer, okay? They're limited by the developer's plan, okay? So, that's where we might be able to have something to say about making improved developments in the future. Kurt's right, you know, water regulated by the state, that doesn't mean we can't have people at the table represented at base around tables, going to meetings, being aware of what the regional water management districts are doing, and looking towards long-term planning for renewable water sources, for other sources of water. You know, but you have to have an organization in place structured in such a way that says, okay, Robert, you know, if you were on that committee, that, that's your thing, head up our seat at the table at the state level, making sure that when, when it's being discussed, we have some voice at the table. I've already been invited to a number of different meetings, and, and they're welcoming, you know? It's not that they don't let us in, we're just not well-represented in that regard. So, in terms of organizing a water committee that will actually be effective, and have a good deal of effect for even generations to come, what we've suggested is having a small group of people work with the goals and mission statements, and structural organization of that group, and then how that'll branch out to people that will work on local issues, regional issues, state issues, and make sure that we have a voice in the matter, rather than being victims in the issue. Okay? And that's all we're trying to arrive at under this category today, was, can we go ahead and agree that each commissioner would have an appointee to help organize that structure, okay? And how they're going to communicate up to the board? Not make policy decisions or recommendations, just offering good, sound advice. And I'll give you a good example. There, there's an individual in the county that's willing, pro bono, with some volunteer help, to initiate a study, to actually get to the heart of the matter, which is how much water is really there, and what the... much water is really there, and what the fluid dynamics are surrounding our confined aquifer, okay? That would tell us a whole lot. If you go to the state and ask, ever answered that question, you'd get, "Well, we don't really know," basically is the answer, okay? And having that as your source, your sole criteria, then you gotta go, "Well, we have no choice but to be as cautious as we possibly can in whatever decisions, we have some power." Okay? So, all you can say today is, it's troubling, because the knowledge that we do have about these confined aquifers, that are dropping, they're sent to the sleep, okay? And, and that's in terms of pressure that drives water out of those formations to these well wars, okay? At the end of the day, there may still be an ocean of water down there, which people like to think of it as that, but no hydraulic pressure, so to speak, to drive that water to somebody's well in your backyard. And we have people that are willing to step up and take a leadership role and offer their professional expertise in these areas. So that's what we wanted to do at this point, Jen, I was just simply to get a core group of people together, and whether that's three commissioner appointees, and then maybe we can agree at one at large, or whatever, but those people would focus in on structuring the organization to succeed, not to just fool around and fail. Okay?
And let me say something too, you know, as Kurt said, Commissioner Shiegel said earlier, you know, we're limited in our authority. So, our opinions, our personal feelings, or any of that, you know, as elected officials, is really irrelevant. We, but what I think we're doing, as a county, we have been doing, is we're trying to put ourselves in the best position, given the limited authority that we're allowed to have by the state, we've got, I remember we had all those people. You know, we're coming up with the MOU process. And the MOU process ultimately is not the biggest stick that we wish we had to make our own local decisions, because ultimately, the oil and gas industry can come in and say, "Well, we're gonna default to the state regs, you may punish us for six months and hold up our permit, and make us go through the special use permit process, but ultimately, we're gonna get whatever we want anyway." The incentive is, we're, you know, we're not using a stick here, we're using a carrot.
Are we talking about the oil and gas?
We are, but I'm, but I'm leading up to a point. And the point is, we're, we're trying to put ourselves in the best position we can to have the most authority we can for local decisions. But the bottom line is, speaking for myself, I don't know the answers to all the theories and all the speculation and all the questions about our aquifers and our water supplies. I don't pretend to know if hydrostatic pressure is ultimately gonna be a problem, I don't know if there's enough water down there to last a thousand years. I don't know any of those things, nor do I ever, would I ever expect to be able to figure them out without a lot of really powerful intelligent help. And we've got some people in this county who can do that better than anybody, and I'm saying they're gonna, you know, they're not wizards either, but we have, why don't we tap into the best minds available? And we've got them out there wanting to help us. And I need them to help me make the best decisions I can make, and ultimately, it's very selfish. I need a water advisor committee to give me the facts, you know?
I think it's an excellent idea, and it was just the question or the comment was in terms of how broad a spectrum would we be able to call on these folks?
And just to get that, yeah, and we can task them of anything we want, yes. I see it as eight, three people, one appointee from each commissioner. If, depending on the situation, if that group wants to bring in additional help, because they know Joe Schmuck down the road, who's a water engineer and can help them out make a decision, then they can do that. What I'm wary about is appointing more than three people, because I saw that happen with the last one, last year. We started out with three cores, and then we appointed more, and it really never went anywhere, because it became a personality contest in the county. There were people that said there were political motivations behind why somebody wanted to be on there, and what their motivation was, regardless, we need to have information, and that's what the idea of this core group is.
And I agree. I think, at least in Phase One, and you need to have them right on their feet, and I think, I would have no objection to having three, as long as it's the right three. They have very specific mission, get the heck out of the way, and I would do the job that would be done by helping you complete those guidelines for us, by whatever is necessary.
And it could clearly define that it will be an advisory group, and they will make recommendations.
After they deliver the product and their mission is over?
Correct.
In fact, I can tell you, you know, I know one person already that's interested in doing it for the first phase, but doesn't officially even want to be on the committee, but is just willing to offer their expertise, and they have tons of it, but, you know, don't want any long-term commitments. So, you know, they'll be gone in ninety days, and somebody else will come in and move on to Phase Two, but I think initially, we need to talk about the structure, and then next Wednesday, we're gonna bring forth the people. So, do we, let's, let's get back to talking about the, the structure of the, of the first phase group. Three, five, twenty, hundred?
I see three.
I think, I wanna point to you, and like I said, I can't overemphasize this enough, they're not even gonna get into the area of advising, or, or studying, or being tasked with anything other than creating an organizational structure and identifying goals, okay? And I see them as being long-range statewide concern issues, on down to all of our neighbors that surround us, we're all sharing these same confined aquifers, and we should be paying attention to what El Paso County, and Lincoln County, and Dull, and all the other county counties are doing with water issues, because ultimately, we're affected by what they do. And then locally, so I, I believe that we can move towards making an appointment of three next Wednesday, probably tomorrow, that they can be tasked with going forward with that idea of that organizational structure. And they're not gonna do anything without consensus from the board of commissioners. There, there's the formal functions that we need to perform. And that being said, I don't wanna say something, ask something, because I think what the committee will be able to deal with is questions, if anything else, and, and immediate concern is to make sure that we're appropriately handling metropolitan districts and development correctly. So, it begs the question to you, it seems as though there's a number of these entities on the shelf. They were, they were established, they're not being utilized for any particular reason. Is there a stale date on a metro district that doesn't actually, isn't put to use?
My understanding is that the county commissioners could do that kind of thing, but it's not necessarily been done that I know of. And that's where I have a number of questions about putting something together like this in terms of service districts, is the legal assistance to answer some of the questions, because we've proposed a number of things, you know, we don't know that those are all things that could actually be carried out, or, or the want to. So, definitely, I think we've got a format to give that can begin to have those, those questions answered. This, there's an approach in here that we're suggesting, but it may not be the right approach. It's an approach that some other counties have used, but I don't know about all the legal answers.
Well, you've got to nail it head, because what, your job is to get that done by your board, and you need assistance to get that done.
I can't answer some of those legal questions.
I understand that, but what we're bringing to the table today, we're proposing to deal with Phase One, we'll give you the assistance and the tools to get first questions answered, and it's gonna take more than just us to accomplish it, and we'll have some folks who are gonna help us get over the finish up. And that's kinda why we're here.
And these districts are subject to periodic review, aren't they?
They are.
Under Title Thirty-two.
Pardon me?
It's under Title Thirty-two.
Yes, correct.
Have they been providing that, that review according to statute?
They have requirements to report to the county their status every year. It's up to the counties by state statute, if they have reason to review, they can.
Okay.
Again, that's mine, your interpretation, the title thirty-two.
So, has there ever been anyone designated to look at the annual reports that are submitted, and to ask if there's questions, or how it's functioning, or if a district was started and no development has ever occurred, or very limited development?
Man has changed owners. It's nobody's talking about doing housekeeping.
I've asked the question before, how many of these districts exist? Lots.
There's a bunch.
Is there a list?
Two, four, twelve counties.
Yes, we need to.
Lot, lot, nothing specific?
No, I got files on all of them. Two, four, eleven houses.
All right. That's a lot.
And Department of Dole has the records, if someone wants to look at a specific district, find out who the last and horded officers were, and so on.
But anyway, so, so, to end the, to draw to a conclusion or discussion for what we're gonna attempt to do next, next Wednesday, then, we've all expressed our opinions about what we think should be the composition of Phase One, like you say, Phase One, because, you know, it's gonna be a movement, it's gonna change, it's gonna evolve as the needs change. I was leaning towards five, but I would certainly, certainly consider three for not making a decision today, but for next week. And Larry, one of the things, you, I think we all agree that one of the mission statements of this Phase One group needs to be to help Curtis finish the guidelines, but you've also thrown in one other piece that perhaps we ought to include, that we could ask this group to do at the same time they deliver that product, regularize the recommendation for the ongoing mission statement, objectives of the water advisory committee. So, let them design a real mission statement and bring it to us, right?
But I think we also ought to give them some guidance.
I agree.
Based on...
Well, ultimately, we have to approve or change or reject the document, right?
Based on a couple of points that I brought up, that's what I would like to see in their guidance.
And I would hate for it to seem inappropriate to have commissioners attending these meetings and having them, the idea of having them out there as an independent party that's gonna generate some kind of recommendation that we're gonna either say yes or no to, kinda misses the point. This is about getting a lot of heads together to formulate a plan to address water issues. So, these people, I perceive them working directly with the Board of County Commissioners as an advice resource, okay? So... I'm going to, and, and, and just trying to visualize the concept, we have this room, we have a little conference room, we have places within this facility where these people can meet, and I think we should welcome them to the courthouse, to do their business, in front of the public. And part of their structural organization is going to be, when they're having a meeting, and this is my personal experience, last year, I wanted to see what was going on, and I walked in the room, and was literally have, they used throw at me, "Sign in and shut up," is what I was told. We have no, no voice in this, in this forum.
Could be a lot of people behind that, so.
Well, yeah, I know, you know, I talk too much and stuff like that.
Oh, that's not what I was trying to...
I know, but, but at any rate, this, this should be open to the public, and, and they'll have the ability to say, "Okay, we're gonna ask for, have an appropriate time in this meeting, however, we're gonna try to get through the top part of our agenda first." But, but never say to the member of the public, if they're not welcome to participate, that is entirely not aligned and not consistent with what I wanna do. My role as a county commissioner, so, we have a lot of good talent in the county, and I think we gotta utilize it.
Let me tell you what, I think, tying into what you just said, this is a possible scenario. Today's February fifth, and we, let's, let's say that we, we have this, we wanna have all this done by April fifteenth, I don't know if it's twelve fifteenth. So, if we have this wet group, water test, water manager group, and we tasked them with doing, with, with you, developing these guidelines and the mission statement, and tell them that we would like to have their final draft by March fifteenth, and in between now and then, they work on that with public meetings, public input. And on the fifteenth, they deliver that final draft to, not necessarily says an idea, to the Board of County Commissioners, and we accept that final draft, then we have a month to do our own public hearings, our own public meetings, okay? And, and on April fifteenth, all things being what we expect them to be, we'll be prepared to accept that possible project, we put it in expectation.
As far as public meetings, though, are you talking about a public hearing, or are you just talking about a public meeting to vet what the proposal is?
Workshop.
Because if that's the case, then that'll be done by the planning board.
Okay.
And that, again, falls into our role of responsibility as sitting as a quasi-judicial body, is if we, if we enter into any discussions in a public format regarding any policy decision, our voting ability can be called into question, so that's all the questioning about us. We will have a public hearing, I mean, we can make a public hearing at that business meeting to hear from the public.
Okay.
But if we have study sessions, I believe you'll have the staff to conduct those.
Well, whatever format it would require, once we get a final draft to, to vet it publicly and give the public, our citizens an opportunity to input into the comments on the final draft, however that needs to happen, we do that before we bring it to a final vote of the board.
Is that set to go before the Planning Commission as well?
Well, what, what we did at the last Planning Commission meeting was, okay, to find out when the soonest we could have a workshop on a draft of what we put together, and they, that would be March fourteenth, because they've got oil and gas meetings between now and then, so if March fourteenth were a workshop, we could schedule a hearing for, with the Planning Commission for the, at the end of the fourth Thursday of March, whichever is the twenty-eighth. That would provide some time between the fourteenth and the twenty-eighth. I don't know what the Planning Commission, they may suggest an edit, or more group input, or whatever, but that would be the idea, to go before them at a workshop, and then a hearing, but we'd need to schedule, we'd need to post for the hearing in advance of the fourteenth of March to have the twenty-eighth as a potential hearing date, thirty days. And from that, March twenty-eighth, the, your board as commissioners could meet probably the second Wednesday of April, and as a hearing, if you sort of wish to do that. We need to set some of this up in advance, so it'll work.
Well, this is what we're starting to get to, we need, we need, we're running out of time, we need to...
We're running out of time, this one, yeah. For that particular...
Our first meeting in April is the tenth.
Is it?
And so that would be the, the closest meeting before the expiration.
Okay. Tenth is our...
So, so, just to clarify, we're talking about a couple different issues. One is just establishing a sort of steering committee to generate an organizational structure for a water advisory committee, separate apart from what you're trying to accomplish here, is an actual document to be adopted by, by the county for reviewing and the process of accepting applications for these districts.
It's a revision to our existing regulations.
Right, and given that, it shouldn't be all that complicated, right?
Well, it's, again, a lot of those legal questions, when I get an opportunity to have those reviewed, depending on if, if this format works in that regard, but if they suggest a lot of changes, it's gonna take time to incorporate those changes.
So, is what you're, what you're working on, taking what we have in place and redlining it?
Well, we don't have our own Elton County regulations for this.
You have a template, what you follow states, you have a template.
We've been following state guidelines, and the real issue is the time constraint that those state guidelines put us in, because we don't have adequate time to submit these to referral agencies and get that feedback in the time that's there, and then address that feedback and get a report to the Planning Commission that is something they can use, and in turn, get a report to you. And there's questions in there about the legal maneuverability within, some of the state statutes are specific, some of them don't say anything about a particular topic. What this approach is looking at is, Barb from another county that asks the applicant to come in in advance... to come in in advance of their formal application and submit themselves to a review process that when we go to the formal application, we've addressed the issues, we've got a lot of the answers, and we only ask that that be reviewed to see that they have incorporated what it is that the referral agencies have commented on, that everybody is generally agreed that they're in a good situation. And then it can go through that hearing process hopefully fairly smoothly.
Carolyn, have you flow charted this process yet?
I did flow chart it.
Is it inappropriate for all persons to look at their work product?
No.
I flow charted it as a two-part, two-part process, the pre-submittal process and the non-submittal process. And as to your question, no, it wouldn't be optional. I mean, I guess if they, we do have a provision in there where if they insisted to go forward without the pre-submittal, that we would do that, but they would risk a negative recommendation.
Sure. When we say we ask, we have to ask is why...
And basically, what, I mean, Curtis was writing it, and I did a little bit of editing with him, but my understanding is at this point, we're kind of looking at a two-part, one that would be the regulatory process, that all that does is say, this is what you have to submit, and here's how long we have to look at it, and da, 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 the stuff that we know how to write. And then as a separate document, it wouldn't really be in our regulations, it'd be kind of like the way we did site plan, you remember, you remember? We would have a guideline document that would be more specific in when they said, well, what needs to be submitted, what needs to be in this plan, here's what needs to be in this plan. And I would think that that would be the document that your task force, your free person task force with all our expertise would really wanna be looking at. They, they probably don't have any expertise in procedures, and we do, we can do that, that's what you pay us for. But that part of it, of what needs to be included in, in the financial plan, what needs to be included in the water plan, what needs to be included, you know, those things need to be reviewed by people who are experts in those areas, and those would be within those, those guidelines that we would get out to them, and they would not be in the regulations, it'd be too long.
Right, right. The regulations portion of, there are some specifics in the state guidelines, and there are some gray areas.
Can you, can you boil this down for me, Curtis? Here's where you're having difficulty and need some legal expertise. Here's clear-cut statute, we're just reiterating what the state already says.
Right, well, that's what I...
We don't need to make, we're getting a bible out of what can be a pamphlet here.
Right.
Because, and Curtis corrected in saying that there are state statutes that govern the process, okay? We're trying to tailor this to specifically make sure that a district's appropriate to plan development, okay? And that they, they color within those lines and don't expand their authority statewide one thing or another that might be inappropriate or, or not in our best interest, so I'm not...
State doesn't cover stuff like that. That's the problem, is the state hasn't given us much. And basically, what you're talking about, the state statutes, that's the form, it's a metal. That, we've followed that exactly as best we could interpret, because it's kind of kind of delivered the state statutes. What we have tried to add here, and what the public seems to want, was to add a timeframe prior to, because the state statute has very specific timeframes, and you've got a 30-day timeframe start to finish, you can't do much in 30 days.
Unless, unless there's a need for more information.
If the applicant agrees.
Sure.
That's right.
That's the thing. See if the applicant agrees. If the applicant doesn't agree...
But if they don't agree...
We're probably not gonna wait the rest of the day. But we can agree to what we're gonna do next month.
Yeah, I think that's good.
So, yeah, okay.
And just one point, it's not your main discussion about the water advisory committee, but I'll ask you to provide me some information. First is I'd like to know, who's the county you're copying off of?
Okay.
And I wanna know if the word sustainable shows up anywhere in that document.
That most would be, mostly.
I don't know why.
And you can get back to me whenever.
Okay, that's fine.
Are we using that as an example, somebody that's already expanded beyond their sustainability? Because I would more of follow their model.
Now, what do you mean specific?
They've, they've developed past their water resources already.
Oh, I see what you're saying.
That's what we're trying to prevent from happening here, is develop our, our county beyond the water resources that we have, or...
We're using that as a... This doesn't deal with the sustainability of the water in the county.
Our mission today is to get a water advisory committee in place to help us write the guidelines.
Ask and answer.
Going for it.
Do you see, he put it a different way than I did, but I think at the end of the road, the problem is the same. We have a finite amount of water, we have no street for, for much of this. It'd be wonderful if we could capture some, some of the bishu and Kaila creeks and so forth, but most of this water is allocated before it even falls from the sky, is incredibly, we're captive here. So we don't wanna make development decisions that ignore the obvious for all...
Well, this, this doesn't make a development decision, what it provides is a way to address what we wanna look at when a developer proposes to us. So we can be more precise with knowing where we are when we approve that development or deny it.
Okay.
All right. It's kinda mixing these issues up here.
Yeah. So we, I've had all the questions and the information discussion, I need to move forward to the next Wednesday's meeting to, to support whatever I decide to put out, so, have you?
Off for the water?
Are you done?
Yeah, yeah.
Good. Oil and gas advisory board, which was a, was a committee, I guess, or a board that was already based in place but isn't currently met.
It was envisioned if, if we would have had our own regulations, but it was never stood by.
Actually, yeah, that's one of the things I wanted to point out, was that initially when we had a 64-page regulatory document, it included an oil and gas advisory report. This new 17-page document is not. Now, do we still need an oil and gas advisory report? I don't know.
I don't know.
One of the things that this draft incorporates is an administrative process, and that administrative process would be decided by the director of committee and development services as it's written. So perhaps the oil and gas committee is still viable, and maybe would be the decision-making body for administrative applications, I don't know. But it is not, that's, that was its origin, origins, and it doesn't really exist anymore in our current draft.
So are we talking about an oil and gas advisory committee that is operating in a similar function to what we just discussed with water, only for oil and gas? In a direct, you know, as a support organization or, or resource to the planning commission?
Initially, it was, initially, it was envisioned as a similar type body with our 64-page document, and it was actually in the document. And it is no longer in the document, and therefore, whether or not we need it is up to y'all, whether you think we need, we need it as just an advisory body, or another suggestion was that maybe it would be the decision-maker for administrative applications. I mean, there were a few, few things thrown in there that they might be used for, but that's entirely up to you, I just...
We needed that?
As far as I'm concerned, I'm not interested in, in somebody being that approval or disapproval authority. What I'm, if we institute this, what I'm looking at is, the, the technology is changing so fast. And so today, let's just use produced water. With produced water, you can either use open pits, or you can use a closed loop system. Who's to say that next week, somebody might develop a technology that says, we can take this water and we can beam it to Mars? And I would foresee this group taking a look, or being tasked to take a look at, at new technologies that could then provide us some input for the MOU process. So that's... We're not limited to just, hey, I know you can use open pit, we'd like you to use a closed loop system, but, you know, we heard about this, recycling, and, you know, and take a look at it, tell us what you think. Bring us the documentation, bring us the science that shows it's a viable and it's a safe alternative. That's where I kinda see it as.
Okay. Well, and, and...
And education.
And expanding on that, you know, you talk, talk to folks who, who say that there's a different quality of drill, you know, for instance, the shafts, the spacers, they drill the shafts with. If you use cheap spacers that bunch up, you end up with this, and pour the concrete to, in the, in the, in the well, you know, you're standing on one side and thinking another. Good quality drillers don't do that, use quality. I mean, can, can, would this be the kind of group that would have the experience and the knowledge to, to keep us updated about the kinds of things, like you said, that we'd wanna ask for in the MOU? I mean...
Sure.
I mean, initially, we're, the horse is out of the barn on the MOUs, we're gonna be done with them before we can get a task force together, but going, ongoing, you're right.
I don't know about drilling technology, because they're against the state's purview, because they oversee that drilling, but again, we can ask them to find out the information.
But in the MOU, we can ask for, for best management practices that exceed state regulations.
We can ask for anything.
That's, and that's the point of the whole MOU, is to try to cut the best deal, negotiate the best deal we can get, above and beyond, you know, what the minimum standards are. It's like ocean, they'll have a standard, and you can ask people to do better, be safer.
So are you thinking of an oil and gas advisory committee that reports with the department to provide that recommendation on the...
I don't know, that's why we're talking about it, you know, on a study committee, I've been trying to get my mind around what would be, is it needed right now, and what would it do if we...
That's why we're kicking this thing around right now, as opposed to going, or we're not time string here. You folks are tasked, and the planning commission is tasked with getting this thing done, okay, ultimately, and don't wanna interfere with that process. But there's gonna be a number of unforeseen consequences of oil and gas exploration that are gonna come up, and, and we would like to be able to say, here's, here's some smart petroleum geologists, engineers, lawyers, and so forth. We got a problem here, we have a public safety issue. A lady was driving down the road the other day, and a rig tipped over on her and killed her baby, okay? What are we gonna do about haul routes? How are we gonna bring all the, all of our resources to bear on issues that come up that we really didn't plan, we couldn't plan for, because we didn't know exactly where the dig strike's gonna happen, or whatever? We have to be a little bit flexible, and we also have to have repository for public comment. We have, there's not gonna be enough hours in each of our days to answer all the phone calls that are gonna come, unless those rigs come in. I foresee that to be the truth. It's gonna be, it's gonna be hell on earth, and, and it'd be great if we could pre-plan, but we really don't know the direction of it yet. You know, we don't know the results of the sites we, work that they've done, or where the play is gonna go. We're wanting to be able to adapt and adapt and fly, and, and be responsive to citizens' concerns, because we're, you know, the state is asking us to allow. We, we have no choice, it's not a matter of allowing, but experience, go through this experience in everybody's backyard, okay? Like it or not, we, we do have some control of land use issues, and that's what all this is, is about, okay? Trying to get it done as best as we can. But, so, this idea of oil and gas advisory committee will evolve. And if, if you don't mind, I wouldn't mind setting that aside for a moment in favor of concentrating on what this core group of three water folks is gonna do.
I think it's two separate issues. And if we're, if we're going to establish a water advisory committee, I'm not opposed to, you know, appointing three people to an oil and gas advisory committee. Again, what I'm looking for is a group that we can go to and say, hey, I heard about this, what's the science? What are the facts? What's the hyperbole? And is it a viable option?
And if you don't, then go find it.
That's right. And, you know, we may not have something to give to them right away, maybe it's just, let's put together, or we need you to put together a public education program, you know, to try to alleviate some of the unfounded fears, or to try to clear up the hyperbole, or whatever.
Or verify the facts.
That's right. And they can be tasked with anything, they may have to be tasked with anything for the first six months, I don't know.
Well, and you know, to use the analogy of the Kevin Costner movie, build it, then they will come. Perhaps if we have, you know, put together a core group, get it in position, and let them develop their own mission statement or recommend their own mission statement, like we're doing with the water advisory group. Why not get it started? Even if they're dormant for a while, just getting themselves organized. When we do need them, they'll be ready to go.
I have a file full of qualified applicants ready to go, so if we wanna do the same thing...
Got some good applications or good...
Because that makes not any reason to push all that.
Yeah.
So we, so we agree on it on Wednesday?
I'm prepared to name persons to...
I am too.
Okay. We have some other appointments on the table, and, and out of all the commissioner appointees, do we wanna talk about who wants what, or who's holding their...
Well, we kind of did the planning commission thing pretty well.
I think you're talking about the commissioner's...
Well, my position hasn't changed in that regard, I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna alter the nature of the planning commission until their job is done with the oil and gas.
We, what we talked about earlier was the structure and the ultimate. We, we, we answered each other's questions, we're not gonna make decisions, like, I think we agree that by state stat, I'm trying to recap this, by state reg, we can appoint an officer, and it'd be a good idea, and we thought it was a viable thing to do, next Wednesday. So, we all have our own appointments.
Where I think Larry's coming from, though, is from the, there's probably five or six different outside organizations that we normally have representation on, and it's usually commissioners.
Yeah, yeah.
So what I would suggest is, if, like you did the other day, you're interested in ECCOG, if that's what you want, I'm fine. If there's some of the others, like the Sentinel and the Health, if you're interested in that and you want to help TIF work, I, fine, send me an email, and there's a couple that I'm interested in, I'll send you guys an email, and we'll just see what it is.
Well, before it's all over, we may be over there a lot anyway. Either as inpatients or...
That's right.
But anyway, I would, just since we're talking about appointments real quick, I did want to get a hold of you that, you know, I am talking with Dorothy Stone, I talked with the Prairie Development Corporation, and told them that perhaps it would be a conflict for me to do that. They, they disagree, wanna talk to me some more about that. There are other commissioners on the Prairie Development Corporation, who if there's a loan in the county that potentially could become a conflict for other considerations, land use, whatever, that those commissioners just routinely recuse themselves from that particular loan. So I told Dorothy, who I have read that was respectful, that, that I would have much of her, we'll talk about that before I do anything rash, you know, and back off from my offer to do that, so...
Well, the other thing to remember too, is just because they're on the list, you're maybe on the list of appointments, doesn't mean we can't change that. Something may happen.
Yeah, yeah.
Want to change, change that vague work, is that?
Yeah. All right. The last thing we have on urgent today is the Albert County Enterprise Authority MOU contract is a long term, and this for general discussion. We met with Mr. Curle, who is the president, at least, the single only board member for the ECA organization, and I guess the discussion here today is the next week, long with all the other plans, is to terminate, we have not, you know, we have the consideration to continue that MOU or not. And so we just wanted to discuss this today, in case you really wanna get anything on the table that might be of interest to the other two votes.
I, I just go back to the history of the ECA, it was started as a county entity, and Craig was brought on to run that entity. I think that there's been some significant work done. I mean, if you look to see what's actually taken place, the only thing that we really see on the surface is several wind towers or turbines that were put up at Albert County that may not have happened before. Been several businesses by Craig's own account have been helping small business loans and developing business plans, and helping individuals to, you know, to build a business or to increase their business. I think it's a viable alternative for local government to promote business. I've said it before, and I'll say it again, we are dying a slow and painful death, and I believe that we need to encourage commercial development in the county in order to increase that tax base. You know, I'm, I'm not sure if Craig's the guy or not, but that's the vehicle that we have right now. The way the ECA is set up, it's now a separated, it's a tax created, it's separate apart from how it works. And the way it should be established, the way it's envisioned to be established, is that there will be a board of directors on that enterprise authority. That board of directors then makes a decision as to who will be that, that tit over head that goes out and does those negotiations with business. It's up to that board to determine whether Craig's still there or not, you know, he maybe moved out, I don't know, that's the way it was set up. I will tell you, Craig did try to recruit some directors during 2012, however, what I've heard is that a number of those people who were interested decided they're not interested, or at least they weren't interested in 2012, because they felt that if they tipped their hand... that if they tipped their hand one way or the other, that their businesses may be adversely impacted. And so they opted at that time to just say, come talk to me later, I'm not willing to talk to you until after the election. I think it's a viable, not a solution, but an alternative.
Well, I hope it's turned on my desk, I meant to break it.
Just speaking from memory. One that is in effect right now is basically a perpetual agreement that it can be terminated by either party.
This is a pretty direct decision.
It does include a clause for any grants or endowments obtained via ECEA subject to 25% commission up top. That in itself is rather open-ended, if in fact a very large grant or endowment was to come our way, it might, the amount might be capable of exceeding what would be considered reasonable for a nonprofit to be taken in for its operational needs. So I see, I saw some clauses in the agreement that was executed last year that were concerned to me.
Well, and the reason that was adopted the way it was is because there are operating expenses. And so the county did provide seed money. In the 2013 budget, there's seed money provided for that as well, it's $20,000. Ultimately, if you look at other local governments, the way it works is the business community then contributes to that enterprise authority or that economic development council is what it's sometimes called. And that's what provides those operating funds. Since there was only one contributing entity at the time, that's why we discussed that and that was borrowed from, that was borrowed language from some other county entity. That's why we agreed on it. I had the same question at the time, 25% seems a lot. However, if you look at the year's operating expenses, $20,000 to go out and talk to people in a 12-month period to try to entice them to come and do business in New York County, you'll burn through $20,000, that'll be pretty good.
But this has, was that 25% applicable to the project that you stated earlier about the wind farms? I mean, that was a multi-million dollar deal.
No, because that wasn't a grant. No, this specifies any grant monies or monies that come in for, to be used for operating expenses.
So when Chesapeake gave the vehicle to the, to the group across the street, did we pay 25% commission on that?
No, they just gave the vehicle.
They just gave it?
Yeah, there was no money that changed hands, there was no grant, it was just, they had an extra vehicle that had miled out, if you will, and they gave it to Echo.
But theoretically, if you got a million dollar grant, you'd have 25,000 dollar commission.
But it depends on what you're talking about because most grants have limits and caps on them where you can't take more than a certain percentage for operating expenses. So.
The terms low.
The 25% clause in the MOU has never been exercised.
Okay.
So if that's something that we need to look at to renegotiate, I'm fine with that.
The other question, I guess, that I would have would be, what is the appropriate role, what is our long-term mission and our goal, whether it be business roundtable, kinds of discussions we've all been having, you know, where is the place for economic development? Is it part of the planning and development environment? You know, I mean, clearly, I mean, it's one of my top priorities is to create a business development economic environment in Albert County that moves us forward in the next 10 years and brings the things that we need, you know, the destination things that we talked about, a hotel would be nice. But I guess the other question I have and needs to be asked is what do we have on the table right now with the ECEA? Is there anything on the table right at this moment for? That they're working on for us?
Well, he briefed us the other day on his talks with oil and gas companies who may be interested in leasing some of our mineral rights.
Okay.
And there's nobody on county staff that's doing that or has done that in the past.
Well, in my opinion, the issue is, you know, for next Wednesday is when we get to decide whether we're going to continue the MOU or not.
We don't have to. It could continue forever. In my understanding, the document, I've seen two documents this week. One was executed July last year and it basically is a perpetual agreement until it's canceled. And then there was another document that differed slightly that I think Craig would like us to execute now that differs somewhat, that maybe I have to get back.
And I haven't seen an updated one, I just know that it'll be approved in July.
So there's further study that he's going to that, I suppose. This conversation has been a little bit on the side of the table. Anybody out there anyone?
Well, and I just want to add one more thing too. You know, it goes to, and I ask myself this numerous times a day, and you know where it came from, is what is the role of government? We're giving seed money to a development organization. I think it's time that we say that 2013 is the year. You know, we've budgeted $20,000 for that. And the way I foresee an economic development organization is just what I explained before. It's a board of directors who are made up of business owners in the county that come together and they go out and they solicit funds from other businesses in the county because ultimately it's going to help that, that community within the county. And I think that in 2013, it either pays off or we take a different path.
Yeah, well, and I get, go ahead.
Oh, you're right and that, I guess the concern that I see is perhaps a one-man show as a one-trick pony versus having a diverse group of business owners that are open to a number of different types of development and, you know, getting ideas flowing. I agree with Eddie and you made reference and I think it was, I didn't come around to say it, but what protruded that from happening was perhaps Albert County politics. Is that expected to change, that atmosphere where people feel intimidated to perhaps support a candidate or their business will be boycotted? Because I've heard out of total information about, while I was running, the same, very same thing happening and I thought, what a shame, you know, that you can't have a fair armed election without this sort of coercion going on. But maybe that is a problem within that avenue. I agree that having an economic development group is important because a commissioner, for example, needs to be armed length from the, even the inkling of the propriety of being too close to, to the money, if you will, you know, to be influenced by special interest groups and so forth. So I get the need for it and I also get why the past state failed or struggled to keep that innocence about them. So I don't know what the answer is.
Maybe we need a business development advisory group, we need to advise ourselves a debt, but.
But that's where I'm coming from, is I think that now's the time and if the business community rallies around the ECEA, okay, great. And then in 2014, the county, we don't have to use tax money to give them seed money, the business community will provide those funds. And we've seen some of that come from the wind farms and from some of the other larger entities that are in the county. They've contributed to the county party and they've given a vehicle. The idea is for them to actually contribute along with other businesses to that economic development body. And in my mind, if it works in 13, great. And if it doesn't work, then we change course.
So your recommendation then is to give it another year and the decision is whether we do that or, you know, or, and who do we want to represent in Albert County in the economic development areas, that's really about, and I think we all have to make that decision accordingly.
Well, but there, again, you're saying who do we choose? We have one choice on the table right now. It's ECEA.
I was never wrong.
Nobody else has approached the matter at this point in time.
That's true, but nobody's going to answer it either.
Well, there was a lot of talk about it last year. There were several individuals who came up and said, I can do that. Okay, so maybe it's time to do that. We have those discussions throughout 13 to see which way we're going to go. But I'm not for continuing to throw money and tax money at something that should be driven from industry.
Well, for that reason and for a whole lot of reasons you give, and I'm lacking confidence at this point in throwing any more money at it.
And that's.
But that's me today.
That's why it's four to three with what I'm hearing.
But I'm open to learning more.
Well, I have everything I need, you know, considering my decision for this one.
Okay.
Okay, is that it?
Well, that's it, three years, you said, I thought you were going to talk, right?
Yeah, I had, I had asked, you know, today there was an announcement that Richard Miller, as I do, who loves to quote other things, has taken a position with a solar company.
Solar firm.
Yeah. New technologies and great opportunity for him, so we.
I guess.
I'm sorry.
You told me, but I can't remember.
I'm sorry, I'm happy.
I've just asked for which firm.
I'm trying to remember.
We had solar.
Solar technology.
Yeah.
Clean, solar.
Solar.
Clean, new, consolidated or can, yeah, something like that.
They have a patent, well, that's, they have a patent on a device that connects to individuals' solar panels that monitors the output of their solar panels and reports it to the energy companies for credit or backup. So it's a patented device that's a heater device and that's why they told me I don't have any more detail on it. So, you know, he's excited, this is a tremendous opportunity for him, we appreciate the service. But we've asked the folks from the planning commission, or planning the development department, given a sudden notice today to come by and just make sure that we're doing everything we need to do to support you with the loss of your.
Russ.
Boss, yeah. So just an informal.
I think Carolyn was going to speak to the issue, go ahead, do that.
Go ahead, yes.
Can I just finish on that, just so you know, before everybody came in, what I told Carolyn Curtis is that I've asked Richard to give us a job description. He just updated that. So we will get that posted as soon as possible and then it will be widely disseminated.
You know, it's a post that JPA.
And that's what we need from you. I'll need you to give Candace so she can get that out.
Association of.
Miami, I'm sure.
Plant, planning association, was this that for?
Can I wait on that?
There has been association of plant, Richard said he was going to get that to me today, so.
Perfect. Before we, that die is completely cast and disseminated for a job opening, I'd like to take a minute to get to know the remaining members of the building department and planning and all their roles and ask for their brief description of what they feel their role is in this picture and help that to define the job description that half the people are looking for and not necessarily to be a prescribed motion of the American Planning Institute or whatever they call the trade association. Because I can't imagine that a planning director is a one-size-fits-all anymore than we're equivalent population who are out of the county. They have a different criteria for what, you know, that person may not be required or there isn't any hats as what we do.
I just meant EPA as a place to post a job notice because anybody who's looking for a job and wanting is going to be looking at that.
I thought that was a can, an office.
No, I just meant as a place to post, I mean, you can put it in a thousand newspapers and you won't, it's a tax.
It's a trade publication. It's like any publisher, when you need a Japanese paper.
I was speaking about the nature of our.
No, no, I agree.
Our solicitation.
And we'll have to tweak the job description, but what I would like to see is to get it out there as quickly as possible.
We would too.
And that's one of those issues we need to fill is that we can't, we can't leave a void there that long. So the sooner we announce, the sooner we'll possibly fill.
Which is pretty much the subject of what I need to talk about.
Well, and I think you might agree that your current departments are running at a certain run rate which is in a pretty stagnant economy and we may have to anticipate particularly oil and gas res up in our county that we may have an onslaught of building department issues, for example, or planning department, consulting department issues. We may have a whole new ballgame on our hands, you know, relatively short period of time. So I think there is some discussion in defining who that person is, is going to be a special role.
Well, one of the things I asked people to come here today for was just, you know, it was the last minute of the invitation, was in fact, in mind of the fact that Richard's late, where are you at? What's going on? What do we need to do? And until we get somebody in, whoever that person may be, what do you need from us? Because now there's a little bit of a gap in the department, so.
And, you know, as you guys know, I've been working pretty much with oil and gas stuff and I'm, I feel comfortable in terms of being at speed with where we are. The problem is that we're kind of at a critical point and without a rudder, I'm not sure what's going to happen to our timeframe here. We have only in this last meeting brought in the industry. I mean, we've talked to the industry and we've gone through this process, but you bring too many people to the table, you never go anywhere.
Now, are you talking about, when you say the process, you're talking about the MOU, the best management practice?
Yeah, the MOU.
And the regs, okay, I didn't.
And the regs.
Want to make sure who we are.
So we've only just brought the industry in and as you might expect, you've got a lot of comments. Some of them, I, all of them I would have an opinion on and some of them I might even feel comfortable saying, yeah, we can, we can do that, that's reasonable. But a very many of them are pretty much core components and I, and I need direction because I'm not going to say, yes, we can.
What kind of direction?
Well, for instance, for instance, they, you know, the industry doesn't like the closed loop, they want open pits. The industry doesn't like that they can't spray their produced water on the roads. Some core, some core components in these regulations that they don't like. Now, that was fine, we solicited those comments, but it's one thing to solicit them and sit down with a group and a rudder and decide what ones you're going to say, yeah, I agree with you on that or no, I don't, or we're going to compromise.
So you need a decision maker for your editing committee to get the final product to ask to make the final decision.
Exactly, and I do not feel comfortable in that role at all.
Okay. How quickly we get to the whole cast, the doctor committee up and running because.
Because, I know you guys want to get it done and unfortunately, timing wise, this is, this is really not a great spot to.
I understand, that's why.
Well, that's job one for advisory group, okay?
We are an editing group, but, but still, and then, you know, the final analysis, the editing comes about and.
The editing group is deepness to death.
Right, and if nobody, if nobody, if you can't come to an agreement, then generally, Richard says, well, here's what we're going to do. That's what I'm missing.
And I've witnessed him taking a strong position and so that everybody's clear. This set of regs will more or less mirror the COCC or state requirements.
That's correct.
Okay, this MOU encourages us to be more flexible in terms of setbacks and so forth, especially as it concerns all the spacing units that sit right next to our school, for example, or someplace that might be your medical facility or nursing home or those sorts of things. And he's taken a pretty hard line against this MOU towards having closed loops and the.
And I'll tell you that most of those are items that are coming back with comments from the industry and that's why I say I'm not comfortable, you know, making any determinations there because it's black and white, it's a gray.
So the comments coming back from the industry are one of the five components of what, and you're not comfortable sorting through those and making decisions by your name?
Exactly, exactly.
And we need a, we need the, we need the process in place or the support in place for you to continue moving forward and get this done by April 14, because Richard was making those decisions.
Right, and the comment period is over on the 7th and we're supposed to, all the industry guys are supposed to send their comments, you know, on the 7th of this month. And then we're going to meet, we're supposed to meet next weekend and we're going to be supposed to meet next week on the 12th to take a look at those comments and discuss them and hopefully come up with an answer to them. And then we, we're supposed to have the planning commission meeting on 28th and hopefully take a vote on that date.
But isn't that the date when the industry conference, those folks are supposed to be weighing in with their?
The 7th. They have to give us all their comments by Thursday, this coming, and I've already got some.
Okay.
I've already got some. And I wouldn't be concerned if they, if the comments that were coming back were relatively minor, like we want a paragraph in here that protects us that says, if we meet all the qualifications, we'll get approved. I'm fine with that kind of stuff, that's just common sense. But the core concepts like, you know, injection wells being associated with an integrated recycling facility, I don't like that idea either. They're core things, major things that. They're core things, major things that for all intents and purposes gut the MOU. That's, that's the bottom line. The bottom line is it basically guts the MOU. They, the industry wants to go with state standards.
Does it? Then let it go, let it go with this document here.
Wait, wait, wait. It doesn't gut the MOU. It guts the addendum.
Yes.
And that's what I've said since day one.
But without the addendum, the MOU really doesn't have much.
That's not true. What this does is it sets the stage for an adversarial relationship. When you, if I'm in the industry and I sit down with the county and you say, here's this addendum. There shall be a minimum of 1,320 feet. What's there to negotiate if you've already said there shall be? And that's why I've said since day one about this addendum, is there are things laid out in here that say, this is the minimum. So what's to negotiate?
Well, actually.
Kurt's, Kurt's opinion.
Actually, that's.
Kurt's opinion is, here's an MOU that says, we'll sit down and we'll negotiate specifics. If it's in the upper west corner of the county and we've, we've got people on two and a half acre or five acre lots, it may be something that we want for spacing. It may be something we want for our closing system.
It actually says that in there. That's why, I'm sorry to interrupt, but that's actually in there. The way that it's designed at this point, basically anything between 500 feet, if that's where the state ends up, okay, we're not sure yet. But anything between 500 feet and 1,320 feet is negotiable based on site specific characteristics.
But that's not the way this is.
But that, but they work together, and that's, that's the point. Our wishlist, and the 1,300, I don't care. I can come up with that number. But the 1,320 feet is our start point. If you can tell us why you can't meet that, that's what we like. Why you can't meet that, okay, then, then.
Okay, but.
So set up something.
Excuse me, but editing committee is not authorized.
Sorry. I was just trying to make sure.
I understand. The question is from us is help with that.
That's right. That, you, we're talking about a staffing issue here.
Yeah.
Yeah. And so what we asked you to come up to do today is not, you know, rewrite the reg here, but we've gotta figure out how to stay on track. We're on, you know, we're making progress. Our goal is April. And how are we gonna stay on track now with the announcement that Richard today's leaving? That leaves a huge gap in the process. We gotta figure out how to fill that. And maybe, I have a couple ideas. I'm not sure. This is the time, place, it's like to think about it, but, you know, if we had somebody, if I, if we could call him Richard today and let him finish this project, we would. That's not gonna happen.
This is happening today, by the way, and we don't have to come up full pistol out and say, here's the answer. We're gonna fill his shoes immediately, whether it's a good fit or not. We still have the ability to, and we have been receiving oil and gas drilling applications. But.
Did you see that one I got yesterday? It's literally, literally, I'm not exaggerating. Am I exaggerating?
No.
Two feet, two feet.
One of the answers I wanted by having you up today was you bore the answer. I don't feel comfortable making some of these decisions of the information I'm getting back from the oil and gas industry. Thank you for being honest, but that's one of the reasons I asked, we asked, yeah, needed to know that. Given that answer, what are we gonna do to move forward?
We have other issues that on a daily basis are a problem for us. And that was, my other question is, you know, can, are we gonna send someone in to, you know, so we have someone to go to and say, none of our rights give us the answer to this question, but I gotta give an answer to this question.
Yeah, and it's not just.
Not just what I asked.
Can't folks from the other year do what Richard's doing? So this is a challenge.
We have to work with that.
We're trying to figure out where we are. That's basically what we're gonna accomplish today, knowing that we got a problem. And we have to figure.
Okay, hang on. Help me out because I'm taking notes. You want some help in the issues of oil and gas direction and so?
Well, specifically, because this is so under the gun timeline. But we also need, I'll just give you a quick example. A guy home today wants to do an ice cream, mobile ice cream shop on 29 and St. Daniels. Now, he's on a residential zone. He's property. So technically, according to our regulations, he'd have to go through a special use review because it's a retail, it's a retail entity. Okay, so you go, you have to go through a six-month, $5,000 process to put up an ice cream stand. If you tell him you just can't do it, or the only other thing I could think of was telling him, you can ask the commissioners to look at it as a home occupation, but remember that that opens the door to retail on residential property. So that's the sort of thing that Richard would say, do this.
Here's the bottom line. If you don't have a planning and development director.
We ask.
Okay, well, yeah. Let me throw this out there. Would it be appropriate if there's a question regarding zoning? Is that what you just framed?
Yeah, for sure.
Zoning issue? Okay, to refer the issue to the planning commission? I know they got their plate full.
What I'm saying.
Would that be the appropriate venue for that problem to go to? And then they would make a recommendation based on the existing zoning laws in this county to us to accept or deny that application.
Says an informal thing I draw on the agenda? Because that's the only time I see them, is like the meetings. So are you saying that I should write something up and send it out and put it on the agenda for the planning commission to discuss? See, the problem is it's like a day-to-day.
What I would ask for is give us a day.
Yeah, we didn't plan on actually getting it.
No, I didn't expect the answer right now, but I was just trying to throw it out there that we actually have a day-to-day issue that we.
Got you.
I think one of the ways to address something like that is right now you've got a special use if you wanna do that. You're looking at a six-month process at this kind of expense. Now, that's today's answer. If this person wants to come back and explore some other kinds of things on a longer timeframe.
But if we've got a, if we've got, if we've been able to facilitate routine decisions with our planning director and he's gone, the answer is not to revert to where we were 100 years ago and say it takes six months. We've gotta figure out how to keep the continuity to the service to the citizens, the business community, and all the people that expect that level of service. I don't wanna, I don't wanna, you know, stall them just because we can't, because, because Richard's weak. We gotta figure, there's a better solution. I'm not sure what it is up top of my head, but we need to talk about it. So give us, we need.
That's what I, like I said, I didn't expect to, I'm just trying to give you an example of where we're at, what we need. I mean, if you said, come to me and ask me, okay, I'll come to you and ask you if I have something like that.
We'd be in danger of making a huge mistake if we were to make those determinations without.
I, I just mean, you know what I mean.
I don't think Ray attempts as a planning director, but we'll have to find out. So.
And your next request may have to be something as accurate as a ice cream stand.
You're right.
Or something. And so I think I need a few days to get my head around what your problems are and what the nature of Richard's complaints would be in order to look for his future in dealing with these.
Giving me some of those questions could put you in a place where you might down the road make an imperative of decisions.
That's it.
Wouldn't necessarily be a good question.
Nope.
Until, I would say until we deal with that, we've got regulations in place. We have zoning regs. And you have to refer that to our current zoning regs. And with the caveat is, things may change. We're trying to streamline our process, however, here's what it is today.
And they're proposing a commercial business on a residential piece of property. That's an example.
If it's fine, if it's next to the area that's actual property.
We'll take it under the planning process.
Okay.
What about the building side?
We're fine.
Okay.
Everything's working smooth. It has been for, basically, right?
Now, I think that from the building department perspective, things, things are really gonna be business as usual for us even in Richard's absence. It's, it's gonna be difficult from a recessionist standpoint when somebody has questions similar to what Carolyn was talking about. So really, where planning is concerned, is where most of the trouble's gonna come in with Richard being gone. From a building department perspective, we, we, it's gonna be business as usual. We'll be running the same way, really. Most of, most, any of my questions or concerns or the citizens' questions or concerns are with building go, you know, to add, so.
So is there any, any law approvals? Is there anything that you need from us on a day-to-day basis? Operation review that, like, they have, they have obviously some voids. There's no voids that will prevent you from doing your work day-to-day?
I know it could, but it's all.
Uh huh, yeah.
Lacking a director, you need somebody with signature authority as building official? We just designated a building official a hundred days ago and now he's gone.
Not really. I've been, as deputy building official, I've been signing all the documents.
Okay.
Okay. Anything else that we should be aware of?
I would be concerned honestly about when we bring a new director in because the building department runs pretty efficiently. About any of the building department regulations or processes being changed with a new director. But I guess that, you know, you're concerned a little bit.
Yeah, it's not broken, I fixed it. And we're doing really well.
Okay. Will you let us know if something's up?
Absolutely. The only request that I have is, we need to notify the state that Richard is no longer our local government doesn't need. And so we need to put somebody's face on a pipe to be that LGD. Now, I don't know if we could just say, send it to, you know, the CNDS.
I'm all right, I'm all right with that if you wanna do that because I attend all the trainings with Richard anyway. And that's, all that is, is their point contact.
Right. But we just need to make sure that they're aware of who that LGD is during our period.
Should we, should we make a decision on that officially at the next board meeting?
I think we need to do it before the board meeting on an interim basis.
Oh, Richard, you know, voices of confidence in your ability to do that, so.
And since you attend the training, I'd be fine with that as an interim. I would just ask that if we agree on that, that you notify the state as soon as possible so that there's no lapse in communication.
If you, you're ready. Congratulations.
Yeah.
Yeah, don't you have a salary?
No.
I don't.
I'm giving out a little.
A present.
I don't, yeah, I'm both present and present. There you go. But clearly.
I have one more question.
Yes, sir.
So does this now give me the authority to just go ahead and run the building part as I see fit?
No.
No?
As, as you see fit, I would say continue operations.
Right, and that's what I, that's what I've been.
Yeah.
I'd say let's not do anything till, give us, you know, time to get a breath and figure out what's going on. You know, it's really, so I've been, you know, seven, six hours.
It's not broke, no change.
That's right.
Exactly. That's my theory.
You know, depending on who we bring on to answer your concerns, again, I would, it's kinda like with the finance director when we brought Stan on. You know, I would anticipate that that individual, whoever that may be, is gonna wanna come in and see how things are working. And that they may make recommendations to us as to how to change or improve or alter a system, but I'm not looking for somebody to come in and say, oh, clear the table. We're doing this all from scratch. Because that just doesn't make sense.
We don't give things like that.
Yeah.
Does that help?
That helps.
That's what I was worried about.
You know, I would, again, I would just offer if something comes up where you need some direction, you know, feel free to come up and ask, and we'll do what we can. But we need to think through this process to find out what we're gonna do in the end.
The reason these kind of sudden changes are any more traumatic than they are is because we have folks like you there.
You guys know your jobs.
You'd like to be on in the morning and the doors will be open for business. I mean, you know, so, yeah, please tell them.
I wish I had co-regulation that answered all our questions. I wish I had a couple of yours.
Maybe they think of something new.
And I don't wanna drag it on again into the meeting three. I mean, that's the goal of any department in any organization is it shouldn't be dependent on one person. And I can die tonight. Somebody else should be able to just walk right in and pick up where I left off. Now, it's a little different for an elected person than somebody who works in the department, but that's the way it should.
It's Western, I think.
Yeah. And it's times like this that highlight, are we ready for a transition or are we not? And if we're not, then it's time to, you know, write up a checklist of what I do every day and who I talk to, a list of contacts. But that's what I encourage all the departments to do, is to have those backups in place.
And just from my point of view, I will look forward to being able to spend some time with each of you either together or similarly, you know, as we move forward to make the best decision of what's, what's best for the department and the county. You know, we'll, we'll value and wanna hear all your input and your, get your advice and suggestions. So you'll have an opportunity to do that, I promise you. All right. Well, one meeting today.
Yeah.
Thank you, everybody.